Introduce the game here, sir. Go ahead, let him know. Let him have it.
Alright, welcome to Timmy versus David. Episode 5 with guest appearance Alex.
Guest starring, making guest appearance.
Guest starring Alex. He doesn't get a lot of chance to play, so.
Alright, so this is David for David plus Alex versus Timmy episode 1. How about that? Cause I don't want to compete with the other.
Alright, sure, sure, sure.
Battle Royale.
We don't want to confuse anybody. Like it gets very confusing.
Okay. We're playing that same uh Timmy versus David rule, starting out with fifteen hundred and try to make it to five thousand. You lose all your money, you lose of course. Alright, so.
Easy. Yeah. So easy, so easy.
Yeah, I'm still, yeah, I could probably just carry over all my winnings from the last episode.
I think we can tell the YouTube what we're working on right now is we're actually talking to a casino partner. And they're actually, they're actually gonna let us play at their casino.
That's it. We're gonna live play. You're gonna hear, or you're gonna actually hear us uh just talking crap at a lot of casinos. So we have a casino that's gonna let us live feed.
We're actually working on that right now, guys. Yeah, we could even let everybody know. We're working on that right now, live streaming.
Well, we don't want to say who yet, but yeah, we're gonna live.
We are working on that. I will put that in the YouTube community thing.
Yeah, we're gonna have some fun. Oh, that's gonna be a blast.
Yeah.
By the way, it's a, it's a casino that's uh.
Fifteen hundred?
That's come a long way. It's a fantastic place. Uh they're great partners with us, so we'll see. Of course, then you'll have, we'll have like, you know, you know what's funny is like we, a lot of our dealers from CEG work there now. Like they would be hard pressed to put a non-CEG dealer on that game.
Yep.
It depends, you know what I mean? That's pretty cool.
That's the biggest problem is when I go out now, I run into almost every student. That's also one of the biggest reasons why I don't really play.
Listen, you know, you know, it's so weird. I went out the other day and the CG has, someone came up to me at Aliante and say, "Do you know Alex?"
Stop.
I'm like, I'm like, "No, but I know me." What is this when I go out? They go, "That's not, that's not, that's the second time that happened." I was actually at Dottie's. And I actually had, someone was up there and they're like, "Do you know Alex?" Oh wait, and at the phone store, at the sprint, at the actual, at the sprint store. He's like, "Oh, do you know Alex?" I'm like, "Dude, dude, is Alex the only other person on this planet? I don't understand. What is going on here?" It's the weirdest thing. I went out with Alex one time to Costco. We're walking through a Costco and some guy comes up to him from like ten years ago.
It's okay. I went out last night with my girlfriend. I ran into, I knew the bartender and I knew like a bunch of different.
Everybody, cause he looks exactly the same, although he's much lighter now, but you still look, your face is very similar from high school.
Yeah, my haircut's kind of a little different.
How are you looking from high school? No one would recognize me from high school, like zero. I don't think anybody. I don't think, I, no one, yeah, no one, no one. Do you still know people from high school? No way.
Yeah, all the time. They're like Alex Kim. They actually say Alex effing Kim. Okay, so somebody on YouTube suggested this. Maybe Timmy, hold on.
Did they suggest that I use a strategy card? How about that?
Yeah, that works too. All the YouTube trolls.
Only one hand, sir? No, you don't have to.
The reason why, hold on one second. I don't want to distract too much, but somebody suggested, I'm gonna go from one to two. When I lose, I'm gonna go two hands. If I lose, go back to one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so somebody actually suggested that. I'll figure out who commented that while we're playing.
Alright, so your one hand should be right here. There you go. People can see it better.
Alright.
Alright, good luck.
Don't touch my bet dealer.
Yeah, yeah. Keep your hand off my money, sir. Oh god, perfect. What a perfect start. Look at this. Nine, seven, seven, nine. Fantastic to me. Dude.
Rich, that's one shot.
Did you watch Timmy shuffle? Oh, Rich. So yeah, make sure, yeah, don't even waste your time with the uh the survival. If you're watching Survival Blackjack, the last one, uh apparently I didn't say any of my, my things very often. This guy always makes a hand. You got to hit. Doesn't matter what he has. He always makes a hand. I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually do a little chasing. I'm gonna do a little chase, a little chase. Yeah, Timmy always makes a hand. It's unbelievable. Like he, 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 listen, I'm saying.
Brandon suggested, "Hey, can you try a one and two hand switching? See how that works out."
Switching. Oh, okay. So Alex is gonna try that today. Yeah, I better hit, cause he got twenty. Oh, 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 I got twenty-one. I'll stay. Another five please, sir. Yeah, yeah, you better, better take that. Oh, yeah, there you go. Cooler, cooler.
Four in the hole.
Monkey.
Yeah.
Wow. Four in the hole monkey.
Four in the hole, what's that?
Four in the hole, like you have a four under.
Oh.
What does that have to do with the monkey though?
Because I would have taken the ten.
He wants me to have a four and then he wants a monkey.
Take the ten, yeah.
Got it. Alright, well, I think I'm behind the times a little bit. Very complicated going on over here. Oh god, I swear to god, I had not, not one. Uh except that tw- I guess, well, here you go, nine. Boom.
Oh, it's called.
Dude, I've been calling it out of the shoe. Just so you know, I called it five.
Whoa.
Oh, good enough.
I'll take it.
Oh. Boom. Oh, perfect card, perfect card. This isn't competition, right? Oh. We both lose. Oh, oh, I get to break even on one. Thank, oh no, wait, I win, win. Thank you, Jesus.
You can break even if you want to. I don't mind.
Fantastic.
I really don't mind.
Brandon, the system's going down pretty good so far.
Yeah, yeah, good work, good work, buddy. Good work. Play it up.
All you guys with your betting system suggestions where I'm gonna continually lose money, feel free to email us or comment below.
Yeah, yeah, hit me with a five or a six. Oh god. Yeah, he, he always makes a hand. You should really hit. You always have to assume he has a six or five when he has a five. Here, I'll stay.
Stay wolf?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You should probably hit that seventeen. This is what I'm saying. See, oh, oh, what did I tell you? Always makes a hand. It's unbelievable.
Pretty good system.
Swear to god.
Do the blinds go off or we just have to grind it out?
Just grind it out. You're trying to get to five thousand.
It's me, yeah, yeah. You gotta chase. I'm doing the soft chasing system.
Soft chase?
Yeah.
Half mardingale.
Yeah, that sounds like my.
Classic chase.
That sounds like my dating situation in college. It's a soft chase.
Yeah, it's a soft chase. Yeah, look, after fifty is a lot of soft chasing going on.
Oh, age restricted. What happened?
Age restricted. Look, 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 I'm gonna stay. At this one, I would like to get paid. Pay B.
No, I did see a weed ASMR channel that got restricted, so.
No, that got restricted. Come on. Weed ASMR? Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
Wow.
People are rolling blunts and all kinds of stuff. Okay, I'm gonna do that uh.
But I don't understand.
Paroli system.
So ASMR rolling stuff, huh? Like they're literally taking.
Sounds of it, the sounds?
They're taking joints and rolling it.
And you get tingly? People get tingly doing that?
I don't know. I think it's because they're broke and they don't have money for weed, so they watch other people. You know how people watch, people eat mukbang and stuff?
Yeah.
They're watching other people like roll joints because they don't have money for weed or something.
You know what makes me tingly?
I know, I don't want to know.
No, no, it's totally PG. I swear to god, totally G. What makes me tingly is, is I was watching people pack up my, you know, to move and they were packing all my boxes and I was just sitting there enjoying like, you know, hot chocolate. I was all tingly, dude.
Oh yeah.
That was all tingly. Yeah, good labor. No, that's terrible. I did that. We won. He broke. I don't believe it.
I'm gonna let it ride one more time. I'm gonna try to let it ride twice and then go back down. We gotta go from fifteen to what?
Uh fifteen to five thousand.
Oh my god.
That's the challenge.
This is gonna be a long ass video, dude, at this rate. I gotta, I gotta, we gotta press. Oh, wow.
Oh, David did it once.
Whoa, oh god. I did it once. Yeah, yeah. Kick Timmy's ass.
Yeah, once.
Yeah, once. And he's still pouting about it. He's still bitter. It's a split tens. He never split tens, dude. Don't ever split tens.
Who told you that?
I know, I just learned it. I, I heard it somewhere. Heard it through the vape. Look at that, perfect card. Timmy loves this crap. Loved it.
Wow, wow.
Just, just, you may want to double down on that one.
Oh, he does.
Oh, perfect.
It's okay.
Seven. Yeah, see? This is what he does. He always makes a hand. It's unbelievable. Having, him having a six up is not a thing. You gotta just hit it.
Okay, I can't. We're not, I'm not gonna make five thousand dollars.
Yeah, just vote for the jugular money. You should just push it, push it all in over there, would you? Now, what happens if he loses all his money and I'm the only one left? Can I just like say?
We'll just have him rebuy for the sake of the video.
How many twenty-ones are you gonna give him? One every hand now? I mean, this is ridiculous.
No, I want my twelve fifty.
Yeah, he has them. Sure, he has twenty-one.
I'm gonna start a new channel. It's called Never Take Even Money.
Yeah, Never Take Even. He has a twenty-one. It's always, it's like, oh god, you don't, ah, bastard.
Two shots, Rich, three shots.
Hit me. Oh, 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 oh. Hit me again, hit me again over here. Oh god. Look at this. Can I, can I, look, I gotta flush. Almost a straight flush. Oh no, I need a six. Oh no, I got two. Never mind. It's all screwed up. What do I got here? Twelve, sixteen. Oh god, I better take a card. I'll take a card, perfect. Ah, that's too bad, sir. I took that two from you. I'm, I'm real, I'm all busted up over it.
You're all busted up.
Yeah, I feel terrible. Feel absolutely horrified. I don't know what I'm gonna do. Yeah, hot chocolate to the main game. Play it's hot chocolate. Oh god, look at this guy. Push. Oh, yeah, perfect.
So I lost that one. A little one and then.
Yeah, I'm gonna go, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna do like, this is gonna be like a slow.
You're not doing your system today.
No, 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 I can't do my system today. You're too strong, dude. I gotta wait for the shoe to turn around. Oh god, I could have done my system, damn it. Oh. Oh, see what I'm saying?
Insurance?
He's gotta have one at least.
I'm actually gonna bet. I think you got it, dude. I can feel it. I can feel it.
Oh, yeah. I saved one hand.
There you go.
Perfect. Perfect. Nice. That's, that's the one reason I used to always play bingo, because they had hot chocolate. They always had hot chocolate. Not a lot. Oh, you know, it's always older, older crowd. They love the hot chocolate. Just so you know, that's, that's a little bit of uh trivia.
Yeah.
Trivia.
How far into the video are we?
Not far enough. We're on the bingo. Oh, perfect. Oh god, nice, dude, guys. I'm not splitting nines. I don't understand what you people are out about. Look, I got nineteen's and then I get, I can have three nineteen's.
Alright, stay, stay.
I'm gonna stay. You know, I got two, I got working hands. Hit that one. Hit it, hit it. Oh.
Twenty, stay?
Yep. Yeah, he's gonna stay with the twenty. What do you think, buddy? Uh nineteen. See, I should have split the nines. Oh god. Fantastic. Alright, see, I gotta do a soft chase, soft chase.
Alright, here we go. I'm gonna go one, three, two, four, two hands or utter.
Wow, one, three, two, four. This is the uh, the helipalogi of Peroni. Oh god. Wow, that was a fantastic card. I'm gonna stay on this one and stay on this one.
Face down.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
Am I a dealer?
Perfect, perfect card, perfect card.
Monkey.
Oh.
Oh, there we go. Okay, watch.
So what are you gonna do now, buddy?
They say you are what you eat, so I'm gonna just let it ride.
Stack it up, yeah.
Stack it up.
Stack it up, buddy. Good. I'm gonna stack five. We'll see, we'll see, we'll see. Uh, yeah, no, you gotta lose those quick. This could be, this could go.
It's not real money, so you just gotta go for it.
There you go.
Cause if this was real, me in real life, five bucks at a time.
Five, grinder.
Grinder.
Joker's wild. Look at this. Can I do uh, oh god.
Insurance? No, yes, no?
I better wait. Oh no. Give me some insurance, buddy.
Nothing.
Ah, you bastard.
Four shots, Rich.
Alright, I'm gonna stay on the twenty. What do you think? Alright, sixteen? Oh god, hit me. Five. Oh god, one, two, man, bastard.
Plus tax.
Eighteen. Oh god, that's what I'm saying. Nobody can make a hand. I mean, it's unbelievable. Doesn't matter. Pulls cards out of his ass. The deepest crevices, dude.
Hold on one second. I'm gonna chase that back. We're gonna chase it back.
Chase it?
Yep.
Uh oh. See, this is where I should lower my bet. Just let him kill himself.
I'm gonna pretend like, just call the Bachar system where I just go purely based on my emotion, how I feel.
See, empathy playing. That's the strategy. That's my strategy. Seventeen, thirteen, fifteen.
Oh, Timmy.
That's what I'm saying. He always makes a hand. You always have to hit. Doesn't matter what he has. He makes a hand every time. There you go. Yeah, check change here, buddy, will you? Give him a lot of change. All the change he needs.
Oh my god.
No, no, that's brutal. Timmy's the ultimate cooler.
Okay, I'm gonna do Bachar style. So that was what, two hands or one hand? I bet one hand. I'm gonna go back to two.
There you go.
And I'm just gonna go, just go all in on one hand next time.
I would just get a lot of fifty cent pieces, just so you know. Ten fifty each.
Do you have any silver, sir?
Any silver?
Oh, my god.
There you go. Perfect time to go down. Get that fit. Make sure, you can pay it first if you want to. I don't mind. I don't mind. Stay. Hit me. Nine, boom. Hit me again. Five. Oh god.
Now it's gonna be hard to hit five thousand. You guys play small.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stack it up.
Oh, there you go.
Wow, two twenty-one.
I actually think about doubling down, but alright, I'll take my.
Yeah, you put the whole twenty-five on there. Twelve.
Oh, yeah, I could have doubled down on that. Damn it. Damn it.
Could have been a biggie. Okay, here, stacking it up. Stacking it up.
Oh, there comes the chase.
Oh, 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 just get ready with those blacks. It's not gonna look, look, on that one hand too. On that one hand. The other hand?
This is called the Alex Kim Bachar method.
Wow, whoa. Oh, that's not looking, oh, he gets eleven on the red.
Boy.
That's brutal. I should almost double down just to take the card. Hey, uh, I'm gonna stay and I'll take the blackjack. Thank you very much, sir.
Take the blackjack?
I'll take it. What are you gonna do? Oh god, go ahead. You might want to hit that one. Oh, he's gonna, oh, 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 man.
Oh, not bad.
There you go, working hand.
Uh, so that's what, eighteen?
Yeah.
I can't even count right now. Okay.
Yeah.
There you go.
Ah, that's good. Well, good thing you won that first one.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations, sir. Winner.
Winner.
Winner. Oh, I forgot, I already won this one. Damn.
Winner.
Wow, wow. Brandon, it's not going too good, dude. No, stack them up. This is, this is uh, this is why I don't really play blackjack.
Yeah, no. No, you go to Joker's Wild, you buy in for a stack.
Timmy, where's the dollar craps?
The dollar.
Yeah.
Is this Joker's?
Eight dollars across.
Yeah.
You want insurance?
Watch, he's got a ten under.
Yeah, no, this is the one. See, look, everyone's gonna chastise me. I have no idea what to do with threes. Split threes, hit threes. Who, who wants a split threes?
Sir?
Yeah, carry on, please. You're Grizz's strategy guide. Hit me.
If you're watching the video and somehow you're still watching, just tune in, just type into the comment block, in the comment box, just type in David loves hot chocolate.
I love hot chocolate. I do, I love hot chocolate.
Comment below, David loves hot chocolate.
It's good for the throat.
We're gonna actually keep track of all the comments in the videos.
Four, three. Uh, that's too many to me. Oh, I should have hit that one. Oh, I should have saved it. Hit me, eight. Yeah, I almost said, oh god, it's gonna be quick.
Dude, double down for less.
Double down.
For less. Yeah, that's definitely a less.
Oh, oh, big, big.
Five, fifteen, sixteen.
Oh yeah, winner. Wow, that whole stack. Pay him. Biggie. Oh, all he needs is a chip in a chair.
Yeah, there you go, two thirty.
Wow, that's a quick green for you.
Give me some green.
There you go.
Yep, perfect.
Perfect.
Yep. Alright, here we go.
There we go.
Here we go. Here we go. This is the only way. I'm gonna get my money back.
All in on one hand.
Here we go.
There you go.
Oh, look, what's that? What is that?
Hey, hey, those are uh checks. Look, here comes the blackjack.
Hold on, hold on. Insurance, insurance? You want even money, sir?
Uh, no, no, I wanna go for the win, buddy. I want you to figure out.
I want insurance so bad. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. I know Timmy has it.
Ah, nothing. See? Pay me. Nine. Uh, here, ready? Double. Ah, there I go, twenty-five. Oh, thirty. How much is that?
Thirty.
Oh, damn it. How easy is that?
That's pretty easy.
That's pretty easy.
Hit it, hit it.
Oh, there it is.
There we go.
Twenty.
Give it to me.
That is, oh, too many.
Wow, watch, I'm gonna let this one ride one more time too. Better give it all black to me. All black, all black.
Oh, how much is this?
Wow, two, three, four, four, sixty.
It's like, yeah, four, four sixty?
Yep. This is the part where the floor person's coming over to watch the game, because everybody's getting suspicious of me.
Yeah.
Alright. Only they, only if they use it, I'm just chasing it.
Wow, that's a big comeback, buddy. Big comeback.
He might even make it to five thousand. Oh, if this one hits again, oh, he might probably.
Wow, if this one goes.
Okay. Leaning Tower of uh.
You sure you don't wanna bet two hands, sir?
It's called the Leaning Tower of Alex's Hopes and Dreams.
It's gonna fall over quick.
Do slowly, nine, that's a good card.
Give him a four, give him like a four or five.
Uh, quid pro quo. This is called, don't give.
Oh, oh, it's a five, though. Oh, it is a five. I will stay on those. I will, I will stay.
Stay. Uh oh, this is called, don't give Alex real money. Nine, 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 nine.
Here comes a ten.
Ten, 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 ten. Ten, ten, ten.
There you go.
Oh no, oh no.
Just to let the YouTube world know, this doesn't actually happen in real life. This is usually called Alex Goes for ATM.
This is, this is David's, this is basically David's strategy. This is the catching the five hands in a row. Just so you know, just so everybody's clear. It's Alex winning, but it's David's strategy. Wow.
Eight hundred fifty, eight seventy-five, eight ninety-five.
Eight ninety-five. Good stack, buddy. I would just do like nine hundred for a nickel, buddy.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Nine hundred for a nickel.
Nine hundred for five.
Nine hundred for five?
Yeah, just grab one more black.
Otherwise, you're gonna be just cutting checks out all day.
And then take a five. There you go.
There you go. Make sure to tap it too, just for luck.
Just for luck.
That's what, that's what she said.
That's what she said.
Wow, wow, what a comeback.
Finally, I get paid. Wow.
Look at Alex. Oh, he's, oh wow.
Look at that stack he got. Quick. Brandon, I love your system, dude.
Alright, hold on. I'm gonna reset the camera before I shuffle.
Yeah, yeah, definitely reset. I would reset the deck too, my god. Oh, it's a shuffle, yeah. You know what? It went, went well for me, but it went better for you. You were almost down, dude. You were down here litty gritty.
That's how it works. You just chase.
Wow, two grand, look what you were there.
Yeah, twenty, I'm uh twenty-two, I'm at twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Yep.
Wow, Alex halfway.
Our, our casino partner, our, hey, the casino that we're talking to, they're just salivating at the thought of me playing at their casino. They're like, oh yeah, they're like Alex Kim?
Oh, yeah.
Alex.
Alex walks into a casino, everybody gets moist.
They're just salivating. They're like, oh, Alex is gonna chase it. Chaser.
Big chaser.
The chaser.
How much are you at?
I'm at um fifteen, seventy-five, eighty. I'm at fifteen, eighty.
You're up eighty bucks.
Am I really? Yeah. Oh, look at that. I'm up eighty. I'm slow playing today. Need to get some wind, buddy.
Oh, that's new.
Make this shuffle, slow play. I know, I don't know.
People are disappointed now.
My balls.
They are tuning out.
No, I know that people are tuning out.
They're like, uh, David's not pressing today?
There comes the excitement. The excitement is, is mounting.
Well, good news to tell um me and Timmy also too, uh during the week, we're gonna record random carnival games too.
Oh yeah.
Three car poker, um Ultimate Tex Hold'em, high card flush. We're gonna actually record and play those games as well too.
Yeah, by the time Timmy releases this video though, that could have already come and gone though. That's the thing.
What do you mean?
I'm just saying. Could be a minute. We don't know if that's gonna be like tomorrow.
There you go.
Is this gonna be sequential, Timmy?
No, sequential. It's always sequential.
Perfect, sequential. So what are you guys doing? Carnival games?
We're gonna do carnival games also as well. Make them incorporate some students as uh designated players.
We're gonna introduce our whole space.
We've been busy moving in our new space, guys, so that's the reason why you haven't seen too much dealer schooling related stuff.
We're gonna show you. We're gonna do an introduction to our space.
Okay, so I played one hand and we're gonna start, because I need to get rid of this red, we're gonna do twenty bucks.
There you go, come on.
Twenty bucks is twenty bucks. That's why I started it.
Twenty bucks is twenty bucks. That's good. Actually, that's good. Hit me. Stay and a stay. Come on.
Hook it up.
I'm a four. Perfect. Perfect.
Fourteen, seventeen.
Oh, that's, that's, wow, it is a push.
Push.
Alright, stacking it up, buddy. This is the one. Six in a row, right here. Boom. Here it comes. Oops. Ooh, look at that speed. You see that speed?
Oh, there's another blackjack for Alex. There you go.
Nine, here, double me. Double me up. Boom. Oh god.
Five.
Two. Hit me.
Fifteen.
Stay. Take my blackjack.
Take your blackjack.
Take free money. Six, thirteen, sixteen, eh, there you go. Look at this, five in a row.
Oh, there he's pressing again. Oh, wow.
Back, oh, I got it. I gotta catch up. This guy's ahead like two grand. Uh, I should have played, oh, 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 double eights, eights. Oh god, always split eights.
Oh, wow, wow.
Oops, check down.
Check down, oh.
Jack the rack, Timmy.
Oh no. Look at that. Did you see that? Twenty-one, just pulled.
Ran out of the casino with the rack.
Pulled it. Look at this. I, I think I might have to play one hand. Look at this, six, four.
Play what, one hand? That's like John Kelly right now.
Play, oh god. Sixteen, hit me.
Ah, there you go.
Stay. Fourteen, hit me.
Fourteen, now is fourteen.
Now fourteen now. I thought that was the ten. Ooh, twenty, I like it. Nineteen, stay, stay. Alright, there you go. Sixteen, there you go.
Push.
Alright, what do we got?
I got nineteen. Oh yeah, twenty right there.
I know, I know. Why you taking my money? Did you see him taking my money? Floor going on here. My god, no supervision.
It is Sunday night, just so everyone knows. It's late. It's actually Sunday night whenever we post this, but yeah.
Alright. There you go. Six, seven, how about an eight?
Oh, eight. I always heard eights.
Yeah, how about a six? Oh god, how many cards are in this thing? What do I got here? I got sixteen. Hit me again, will you please? Oh god, well, of course. Eventually, is it ten, thirteen? Hit me. Another sixteen. There, just take my money. You should just take the money and then give me the card.
Seventeen, seventeen, stay, eighteen.
Wow, just enough to lose, buddy. Just enough to lose.
I'm gonna bet one hand. Hold on.
Here's Alex out. Oh, one big hand.
Biggie, ah, perfect. Here comes blackjack. Come on. There we go. Yeah. I don't know. Soft seventeen, go, hit me. Perfect. 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 Stay, stay, here you go, lots is 21.
Don't do this, Timmy.
Oh, 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 what'd I tell you, I'm calling it, dude, calling it, it's unbelievable, he makes a hand like there's nobody's been, swear to god. I think he practices at home making a hand, I mean, is that possible?
Brutal, and it's...
He's got like two grand.
Making a hand as a dealer, he does have two grand.
Put some of that money out there, buddy.
I would've cashed out already if this was real life.
No, no, if this is, yeah, me and you both, I won $200, I'd already be cashed out, wow.
Yes.
No, no, two aces, two dummies. Oh, I gotta, I gotta double, should I split or double, what do you think? What does the strategy book say, Lisa?
Double.
Where's Lisa?
Double.
Double? Well, if you split, it gives us more comments.
There you go.
You suck!
There you go.
Double them up, double them up. Yeah, just let him double for the whole hundred.
I was like, what is this?
There you go.
Would it, oh, yes.
Excuse me, can you lock that one up, please? Oh, he's just holding that for you, look, see what I'm saying, look, look, look.
Oh, there you go.
You can't, you just, you just can't. Alright, that one is 19, push.
Nice, pay me.
Oh, man.
Jesus.
Feeling, feeling like I'm getting slow and slow tonight.
I know.
It's been a long day already.
Yeah, it's been a long day. It's almost over. Nice.
Should we do crap stuff?
No crap today, next time.
There weren't enough players.
Oh.
And I suck at playing craps, I don't wanna see that.
What are we gonna do, crap thing?
Yeah, we'll do some. Maybe manana or uh... Ah. Are you sure you're gonna stay on that one? I mean...
Yes!
Oh, wow, wow, amazing.
Yes!
Wow.
Uh...
Just give me a black, just give me a black. Yep.
Alright. Alright. Alright, what is this, oh, oh, slow, slow grab.